Definitely on the military. Cooler. Six o'clock.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Caraway leaves in prayer. And Mr. Van Veen leaves with the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We pray that you get us back home safely to our homes. We ask that everything that we do and say in here will be pleasing.
I believe in the Lord. United States of America, we do the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Tonight, we have two new members on the board of Mr. James Van Veen in District One, Mr. Marty Jackson in District Two. Uh, Mr. Wilder is absent tonight. He just four of us. So. The next item on the agenda be election of officers.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, you'll need to do, uh, all the previous minutes.
I'm sorry? Well, they were down below that.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, you're right.
Okay. Is there a motion for? Election of the chairman?
Make a motion that we like, uh, out for chairman?
A second?
Any other motions? All in favor of seeing if I will raise your right hand? Thank you for that. Now we need a motion for election of the vice chairman.
I'll make a motion for Mike Caraway.
Second?
Second.
All in favor of seeing if I will raise your right hand? Okay, on approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, uh, there's only two of us. Come think of it.
Yeah, so we'll just need a motion and a second. From, uh, probably from motion needs to be from at least one of the two that were in attendance. A second can be from, all four of you can vote on that.
There's the approval of, approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll make it.
Second?
And all approval, right hand. The approval of the agenda, we've got, uh, request to move item one and items. Ten to eleven, I think it is. Yes, items ten and eleven to the front to. Somebody needs to get them up front where they can leave. So do we have a motion on the floor to move items ten, eleven, and one to the front of the agenda?
Can I make a motion? Uh, we, we make that a combination move.
And one.
Second?
All in favor signify by your right hand. Now, we need a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Motion, we approve the agenda.
Second?
Second.
All in favor with your right hands? Okay, the first item on the agenda would be the appeal with, uh, Mr. Butler.
There's chairs, there are an appeal. Uh, we have postponed this twice, uh, back in October, and then postponed it until, uh, this meeting in order to, uh, kind of have some other things transpire with this. Uh, they have requested to postpone this again. Uh, we're going to go ahead and run quickly through the appeal. Uh, this does have, have to do with, um, a, uh, a, um, uh, sign, billboard, uh, over on CSX, uh, CSX Railroad Right of Way. Uh, and that's part of the, two of the items that we moved just now, uh, deal with re- rezoning a portion of that property and also a variance, uh, to that. So the, the appeal is to, um, to us not issuing a permit, uh, for a, for a billboard at this location. Again, with the request to postpone and also the, the other two also being requested to postpone. We're not really going to go too in depth into this. Uh, this does show the appeal location, again, and out in front of Club Car, shows existing site. And these submitted plans, you can see here is the billboard itself, and then also the, uh, the radius around the other ones, so it does meet that requirement. Again, it is unzoned property though, and that's where we did not issue the permit due to that. It shows the zoning around the property, again, you have some M1 with Club Car and then Cross Street C2, and then some residential, uh, in the vicinity as well. And again, right now, the request is to postpone action on this until February 2nd, 2023. Please staff recommendation.
There. Anyone who'd like to speak for or against this issue?
Thank you, Chairman Gimsy. My name is Jim Trotter. Um, and I'd like to speak in support of the delay. Actually, well, I thought we talked about till February 16th, but we.
Well, that was for the, uh, the two, the rezoning variance.
Um, this one and ten and eleven, we would just ask, we're continuing to work with the staff to work out the issues on this bill board. A little bit more time. Working with the county attorney as well.
We're going to have to vote these one at a time, so.
That's correct.
If there, is there a motion, item one, to approve or disapprove?
Or to postpone. Are we postponing till February 2nd or February?
February 2nd, that's what was requested. Again, if he wants to change it now, he, he's able to.
I would request that we postpone it till the 16th, because I'm out of town on the 2nd.
All right.
Thank you.
Make a motion. February 16th.
Second that. All in favor of seeing if I will raise your right hand? Okay, while we have Mr. Trotter here, let's go to item 10. Mr. Daniel.
Hang on a second, let me catch our PowerPoint up here.
Yeah.
Might take a minute.
Preview of the rest of the meeting.
Yes, quick preview of the rest of the meeting to come.
Crash.
Going, yeah, probably.
Five minutes will be.
Okay. Uh, so the first request is, um, a rezoning request for the portion of the CSX Railroad Right of Way. It is approximately four acres off Washington Road. Again, it is currently unzoned since it is part of the Railroad Right of Way. Uh, it is located in front of Club Car between that facility and Washington Road. And this shows it is currently unzoned. Uh, aerial sight, it is the existing railroad line. Uh, that primary use would not change. Um, as was discussed, the purpose of the rezoning is the intent to put a billboard in this, uh, stretch of the Railroad Right of Way. Uh, the county code currently requires billboard locations to be zoned C2, C3, M1, or M2, so the rezoning to M1 would facilitate the, the placement of the billboard. Uh, this is the existing site, the existing railroad. And this shows the proposed billboard location. In terms of future land use, it is on the Washington Road and Commercial Corridor. Uh, that is intended for commercial use, and certainly a, a billboard could be considered a, a commercial use and potentially does meet the, the intent of that corridor. Staff was recommending approval on this, but the applicant is requesting to postpone this application to February 16th.
Anyone who'd like to speak against this issue? Trotter, forward, obviously.
Obviously, yes.
And any comment about it?
No, sir, we're just continuing to work with the staff and the county attorney on this and the next item, number 11, the variance.
We need to vote these separately.
Yeah, you will.
They need a motion to approve or disapprove item number 10.
Chairman, I make a motion to postpone RZ 23 dash zero one dash zero seven until February.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by raising your right hand? Okay, Ms. Danielle, let's do item 11.
Yes, sir, the second part of this request, or third part, I suppose, is the variance request to section 98, the list of lot and structure requirements. Uh, this is for the same approximately four acres of the CSX Railroad Right of Way located off Washington Road. Um, if rezoned, this property would have a required setback, uh, per the M1 zoning district of 125 feet from the center line of Washington Road. And this shows the aerial of the property with the existing railroad line and the existing site. Uh, this shows the required setback, 125 feet from the center line of the road. Uh, the request was to reduce that front setback, uh, to allow placement of the billboard, as you saw here, the required setback is on the other side of the railroad tracks. Uh, the billboard is intended to be placed between the railroad and Washington Road, uh, with a setback of 1.3 feet from the Washington Road Right of Way. Uh, that is 51.3 feet from the center line of Washington Road. Uh, so it's a fairly significant reduction in this requested, uh, setback. Uh, there are two existing billboards, uh, within basically eyesight of this location. Uh, as previously shown, uh, the proposed billboard location does meet the separation requirements from these, but you can see all of three locations as you drive down Washington Road. Uh, these two existing billboards do meet the setback requirements or exceed them. And staff was recommending disapproval of this variance request, uh, but the applicant is requesting to postpone the request to February 16th.
Trotter, any comment?
Just the same request, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to postpone till February 16th on the floor?
Chairman, I make a motion to postpone variance 23 zero one dash zero three until February 16th.
A second?
Second.
All in favor signify by raising your right hand? Thank you, Mr. Trotter.
Thank you.
Okay, let's get back. I did not read this error before we started, but I'll try it now. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the planning commission is a recommended body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning of various requests tonight will be forwarded to the ca- commissioners for final action on January 17th, 2023. If you wish to address the board of commissioners that is at their meeting, please see Mr. Douglas to obtain a request to speak for him. All for being here. Item B on number one. That would be Ms. Montgomery.
Yes, sir, this next item is a rezoning request that was postponed from the December 1st, 2022, uh, Planning Commission meeting. This is a request for rezoning off Horizon South Parkway from residential agricultural to planned unit development. Uh, this property is located on the west side of Horizon South Parkway. Grove Town exit there on I-20, and is currently zoned residential agricultural. Uh, the existing site is undeveloped, and the proposal was for a, a mixed-use development with, uh, residential, commercial, and industrial uses. Uh, a large part of this development is kind of predicated around this road connection, uh, which is a county project. The final layout and location of that road is not determined at this time, uh, and that does greatly impact the, the ability to develop a plan for this site. At this time, the applicants are requesting to withdraw this application.
Is anyone here that would like to speak for this? Rezone?
For or against?
Yeah. Or now, is anyone here that would like to speak against this? But either way, now we need a motion to withdraw without prejudice then, or not.
However, however you, yeah, motion to approve, deny, or, or withdraw without prejudice?
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. Draw. Prejudice. Twenty-two dash twelve dash zero three?
We have a second?
Second?
All in favor, see if I will raise your right hand? Next item on the agenda is Mr. Butler.
This here is a request for variation in section 99, Corps Protection Overlay District over at 4130 Columbia Road. Uh, we've seen this a couple of times before. Uh, they've actually requested to postpone again, uh, so we, and again, if y'all decide to do that. There's location of the property, and currently zoned C2 on Columbia Road, and also the Corps Protection Overlay District, you can see it all also across the street there, and in the area view of the property, and the plot of the property, and the site photo, and I'll, again, more site photos of the area, also the context of the site, and the overall conceptual plan. Again, we've seen all this before. Again, this is for a, a Mavis tire, uh, tire change place. Uh, what we're discussing is this section here. Uh, roll-up doors facing, uh, facing Columbia Road, um, also the glazing, uh, with that as well. Um, we've been working with the applicant, uh, for quite some time on this. Uh, they've had some issues with Mavis Corporate on getting some of their, um, elevations sorted out, so we're still working through the process with them. Again, it shows you every head doors, they're looking to replicate. One thing on a landscape plan, this is something that is new, that y'all have not seen yet. Um, it's a little difficult to see, but they do have a new pond that is essentially in this area. What the, what they, or the pond was there before, excuse me. What they now ha- what they now have is the outfall goes out to Columbia Road. Um, they're able to get GDOT to agree to that, so the outfall is to Columbia Road. Um, there is no dumping of water from the improved area to the, to the west of the property. Now, there would still be some sheet flow on, to some that lands on that area that's not improved, uh, but again, that has been accepted by GDOT, uh, which is a, which is a good thing, uh, with some of the things we've heard in the past. Uh, they do have, um, some, some of the buffer on the back of it, they do show us where they are going to cut sewer at the back here, um, so there will be some limitation of the buffer there with then some replanting, of course. Uh, in terms of the elevations, um, these are what they've given us, are the draft elevations we have so far. And then other examples that can kind of, we can look in and say, well, we can do this or that, or you have a bit more within the context of the area. And again, these are elevations with the, actually, these are revised elevations, excuse me. Um, and there are some questions we have for them, uh, to address, uh, that we've also talked with the HOA about, to address some of the colors perhaps, so there's, there's still some back and forth to be done here. And staff does recommending, uh, postponing this request to February 2nd, 2023 in order to get this, uh, ironed out as much as possible.
Anyone here'd like to speak for this issue? Anyone who'd like to speak against it? Would you might like to make a motion to postpone this to February 2nd?
Chairman, I make a motion to postpone file VA 22 1102, February 2nd.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand? Okay, Mr. Douglas, massage operator license?
Uh, yes, sir, this is a, uh, massage operator's license, uh, application, uh, for on-premises only, uh, mobile massage at, uh, 444 Fury's Ferry Road. Um, this applicant came through several weeks ago, uh, to get, uh, approval from us the first time. Now she's completed the process of reactivating the, uh, state massage license that she previously held, uh, since 2007, so she's doing her due diligence to, uh, notify both, uh, our planning commission, uh, this go-around.
The motion for approval or denial on this issue?
Chairman, I make a motion to. Operator license for 444 Fury's Ferry Road?
I'll second that.
All in favor, see if I will raise your right hand? Next item on the agenda, minor waivers, and that'd be Ms. Montgomery, this for information only.
Yes, sir. Uh, this first minor waiver was at 1407 Ashwood Drive, which is zoned R1 Single Family Residential, and this was for a reduction of the front setback, um, actually from Fury's Ferry Road. You can see here, this is a double frontage lot, so it has a front on Ashwood Drive and a front on Fury's Ferry. Uh, the applicant's plans were to construct a, a pavilion in the backyard, uh, near the pool. Uh, you can see the minimum building line does cut through that, uh, proposed pavilion, and this is a, a close-up of that. Uh, so staff did approve a reduction of 10 feet, which is within the 10% allowed for the minor waiver process, and that was approved on December 12th, 2022.
You want to, Mr. Butler, you have the next one?
I think this is a minor waiver for 132 North Bel Air Road, uh, to reduce the front and side setbacks. Currently zoned P1 Professional. There's a location on North Bel Air Road, a pretty small parcel, uh, you'll see on the site plan here in a moment, it's pretty tight. Uh, so you see that the 10-foot side setback here, um, the wall is, or the, um, excuse me, the, uh, uh, the, the outer edge of the walls are actually within that setback, once you put the, um, the sheathing all that on it. So it is a reduction, uh, by one feet, one foot on each side, but to nine feet in order to fit all that on there, and there is on the front a reduction, uh, for an overhang. And this was a, or this was a close-up of the corner, uh, so you can see the brick ledge that goes over that, and this was approved back on December 14th of last year.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Time review of master sign plan, Ms. Montgomery?
Yes, sir, this is a master sign plan for the Greenpoint Planned Unit Development located off Aplin Harlem Road and Wrightsboro Road. Uh, this property is currently a planned unit development, uh, and it was approved back in 2020, uh, with the condition that the examples of signage submitted at that time did not constitute a master sign plan. Uh, the final dimensions and locations of the signs required approval by Planning Commission with each concept plan. Uh, however, it did allow for adoption of a master sign plan, provided that the signs did not exceed the dimensions allowed in the sep- in the county sign code, uh, without requiring a separate rezoning action. Uh, the master sign plan presented does comply with the sign size allowances in the county code, uh, so we are reviewing the master sign plan not as a rezoning action, but just as a standalone sign plan. Uh, the sign plan includes requirements for the Greenpoint logo to be included on all new signs, and that includes standards for the, the colors that can be used and how it is to be displayed on those signs. Uh, one of the kind of unique features of this sign plan is that while the, the master sign plan does use the county code, uh, method for determining the square footage of signage, it does allow the Greenpoint logo to be, um, added to the signs above that allowance, provided it does not exceed 25% of the maximum sign face allowed. Uh, so this would not count towards the, the principal sign, so the business's sign wouldn't have to be reduced in size to have the logo on the sign. Uh, there are four types of signs specified in the master sign plan. The first are the community signs, uh, which are, include the community markers, which were previously reviewed and approved by Planning Commission in 2021, as well as additional entrance signs for the, the different sections of the development. So these were the previously approved community signs, these have been installed. If you have been out on Aplin Harlem or Wrightsboro Road, you can see these, um, on the property. And this was the overall plan that shows kind of the, the different uses in this development, so we do have residential sections, mixed-use sections, and commercial sections, and each of those has a, a different set of sign standards in the master sign plan. Uh, so the residential districts have two types of signs, site identification signs and temporary signs. Uh, the site identification signs are, you know, entrances to the different separate residential communities in the larger development, and the temporary signs are used for things like identifying the builders, or the lots for sale, or things of that nature. Uh, both of these meet the size requirements for Columbia County, and are to be primarily stone, wood, or powder-coated aluminum. Uh, these is similar to the approved sign, uh, for Hollis Creek, which is the first residential section of this PUD, uh, that has been, that sign has already been approved and does comply with the, the intent of this master sign plan. Uh, the mixed-use district uses similar sign types, including the, the site identification sign for single users. Uh, that's very similar to what we just saw with the residential entrance signage. Uh, the materials are the same, stone, wood, or powder-coated aluminum. Uh, they do allow a little bit taller height at 10 feet as opposed to the eight for the residential signs. And then we also do have, uh, multiple user identification signs, uh, which would be the, the larger monument-style signs, as well as a, a variety of wall sign allowances. Uh, and you can see the examples there of the, the blade signs and the wall signs and the, the window signage and awning signage as well. The commercial districts, uh, use some of the same sign types as the mixed-use districts, uh, and then they also, of course, have, uh, larger freestanding sign options for the larger shopping centers, uh, so that includes, uh, taller single-user signs, uh, as well as multiple-user signs and the shopping center identification signs, which are the, the larger signs there. Um, all of these still do follow the, the county code allowance, uh, as far as overall size, and continue to use the same primary materials of stone, wood, and powder-coated aluminum. Uh, this is an example of one of the approved commercial district signs, uh, that has been previously reviewed by Planning Commission and approved for permitting. And the commercial districts allows, um, facade identification signage as well, so we have examples provided here of those identification signs for the building signs, the blade signs, uh, window signage, canopy signage, et cetera, that would be allowed under the master sign plan. Uh, the sign plan also includes prohibited sign types, uh, such as LED signs or message boards, electronic signage, backlit signage, and window light signage. Uh, these were the examples provided of types of signs that would be prohibited in this development. Um, overall, the intent is to tie the Greenpoint PUD together as one development through coordinated signage, with the Greenpoint branding displayed on the signs, uh, the shared material requirements and design standards. Uh, the Architectural Review Board for Greenpoint will be responsible for enforcing the majority of the design standards and will be required to provide their approval, uh, before the county will issue sign permits within this development, and staff is recommending approval of this master sign plan.
The motion to approve this issue?
I make a motion to approve that. I'm planning for the Green. Aplin Harlem Road, the road.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand, please? Okay, home occupation, provisional home occupation, is Montgomery.
Yes, sir, this is a provisional home occupation for Lynn Rose Transport at 5336 Aspen Laurel Drive. This is the location of the property on kind of the south side of Aspen Laurel Drive off William View Parkway, and currently zoned RA Residential Agricultural. Uh, this is the aerial of the site, we can see the existing house, and the street view, and the, um, business proposal is for transportation of, for medical appointments for senior residents in the county. Uh, this business would use two vehicles that would be parked in the existing garage, you can see there on the side of the house. Uh, initially, it would be operated by the two residents on the property, uh, and they, but they would like to request permission to have an outside employee in the future who would drive one of the vehicles. Uh, at that point, one of the, the residents on the property would cease driving for the business, so it would not expand beyond the, the two vehicles on the property and the, and two drivers. Uh, that's a, a limited number of vehicles. Uh, they are still limited by the, the trip limits under home occupation requirements to no more than 12 trips a day, uh, so there should be minimal impact to the, the neighborhood here. Um, Aspen Laurel Drive is a private road, um, it is paved, uh, but it is up to the applicants to coordinate with any HOA, uh, covenants or deed restrictions that, that may impact their proposed business, and staff is recommending approval.
Have a motion to approve or deny this issue?
Chairman, I make. I can make, make a motion to approve the provision, occupation.
Yes, second?
Second?
All in favor, signify with your right hands, please? Okay, temporary use authorization, is Montgomery?
Yes, sir, this is a temporary use authorization at. This is a temporary use authorization at thirty-eight sixty-four Washington Road for a container to be used during construction. This property is located in Martinez on the south side of Washington Road and is currently zoned C two, general commercial. And the site plan shows the trailer to be located at the rear of the property during the remodeling of the Arby's Restaurant here on the site. The county code typically requires these containers to be kind of located behind the buildings as much as possible. You can see this one's located a little bit off to the side. That's due to kind of the narrow space here for circulation. So to maintain circulation on the site, we did allow it to be located in this corner rather than directly behind the building. And this was approved on December twenty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Have a motion for approval or denial of this issue?
No, that's
That was information only.
I'm sorry?
Oh, there you are.
Okay, public hearings. First one, public hearing of the agenda is Ms. Montgomery.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a major revision to the Bartram Trail Planned Unit Development for property off Laurel Drive. This is the location of the property on the south side of Laurel Drive and the east side of William View Parkway. And it is currently zoned Planned Unit Development as part of Bartram Trail. To the south, the property is zoned RA, is owned by the county. It is Patriots Park. To the west, on the opposite side of William View Parkway, is a landscaping contractor's office, a fire department, and several properties zoned residential agricultural. And to the north and east are other sections of Bartram Trail. This shows the aerial of the site. It is currently undeveloped. You'll notice the narrow strip through here. That is the Uche Creek Greenway. That parcel is owned by the county. This shows the existing site with the Greenway Trail running along William View and the existing landscaping along Laurel Drive. Now, the current zoning for this property, it is Planned Unit Development, but under that PUD, it is set aside as an institutional parcel for assisted living, which is typically a large facility that provides care for senior residents. The proposal before us this evening is to revise the use of this parcel to essentially single-family residential. This is the proposed concept plan with that revision request. It is a total of forty-four single-family lots with a variety of, with two different types of lots. We have traditional kind of street-facing lots that make up twenty of these single-family lots. These lots have a minimum lot size of six thousand fifty square feet and are at least fifty-five feet wide. The setbacks are proposed to be seven and a half feet from the side property lines, ten feet from the rear property lines, and ten feet from the front property lines, unless a water line is present in front of the house, in which case that setback would be pushed back to fifteen feet. You'll also notice these six larger square lots. These are intended to be subdivided into four single-family lots for each of those six, for a total of twenty-four single-family lots. These lots are a little bit larger, seven thousand six hundred and fifty-six square foot. These would also have ten-foot setbacks from the right-of-way, unless the water line was in front of the lot, in which case it would be increased to fifteen feet. Perimeter setbacks would be seven and a half feet on the side and ten feet on the rear, with internal setbacks between the square lots of five feet. And we'll see in a moment kind of how that works. Generally, we do require single-family sections of PUDs to have minimum side setbacks of ten feet. We do allow, however, reductions below that when the development justifies it with kind of the character of the project. In this case, the applicant has used a structured stormwater system with gutters tying into the piping to drain everything to the lowest corner of the property. This does help address the stormwater concern, which is one of the main issues with the smaller setbacks. The narrative also notes that this provides more flexibility in the lots and includes allowing side-loading garage layouts on several of the properties, which does give a little bit different feel to the development. The concept plan also shows thirty-five percent of the site being left as open space. These are all elements that have been used in previous developments to justify reduced side setbacks. The narrative also includes that covenants will be adopted for all the lots and the homes will meet the Bartram Trail architectural standards. We'll see in a moment. We do have some renderings of the proposed house styles, but they will all have to have approval from the Architectural Review Board as well. So this is the layout for how those quad lots would work. So they would be divided into four separate individual lots that could then be sold individually. The setbacks, as mentioned, were ten on the front, seven and a half on the perimeter, and ten at the rear. And five feet in between, that's to meet fire code. We do have some renderings of the proposed development and what it would look like. The intent is for this to be a low-maintenance community, so all of the landscaping would be professionally maintained. And these are examples of the proposed house styles. And in terms of future land use, this property is located in the neighborhood's character area on the future land use map. This area is intended to provide for the development of single-family subdivisions and for the protection of existing neighborhoods. This property, the proposal is a single-family development. It is in line with the vision for this area and the proposed density, and it does meet the intent of the future land use map. Staff is recommending approval with several conditions. The first is that undisturbed buffers with a minimum width of fifty feet are required on the south and west property lines. These are required by code. We are expecting this property to be mass graded. The, those buffers are going to contain the property owned by the county for the Uche Creek Greenway. We do typically allow or have allowed in the past trails for the neighborhoods to meander through these undisturbed buffers. So we are proposing a condition that allows the developer to count that thirty-foot-wide property towards the required fifty-foot buffer width. The narrative did include sidewalks of four feet. We do require a minimum sidewalk width of five feet under county code, so we do have a condition just clarifying that. The sidewalks will have to be at least five feet. And then we do have a revision to the proposed sidewalk network. The concept plan showed a crosswalk on Laurel Drive. Traffic does not encourage actual formal painted crosswalks on residential streets in general. So instead of doing that second crosswalk, the condition is for a sidewalk with a minimum width of five feet to be extended from the entrance along the south side of Laurel Drive to the existing Greenway and crosswalk, and then adding the ADA ramps at that intersection with Laurel Drive on the three corners that currently or will have sidewalks, so that you do have the accessibility there to get across the street easily. And then traffic has one condition regarding right-of-way has to be a minimum of fifty feet at all locations, including at the hammerheads, and that no parking zones are required in the hammerheads and must be approved in conjunction with the preliminary or final plat. And then no striped crosswalks on the residential streets, other than at the Greenway, which again speaks back to that condition regarding the modification of the sidewalk network. And that concludes the staff recommendation.
Anyone here who would like to speak for this issue?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Tom Blanchard with Blanchard and Calhoun Real Estate Company and Creek Investors. We are just very excited about the opportunity to try to finally do something on this track of land at the end of our development and feel we're trying to keep within marketing towards a aging and a senior-style community here. That's our intent. We're completely okay with all those conditions. Forward to doing this. Happy to answer.
Do I have any questions? Thank you, sir. Anyone who'd like to speak against this issue? Come forward, please, to the microphone.
I don't want to say that I'm against it.
Could you give us your name?
Okay, my name is Tom Metter. I live on Laurel Drive. Been there eleven or twelve years. I don't want to necessarily say I'm voting against it, but I have some concerns. I was never involved with the forum where the, where the homeowners associates and got to meet with Mr. Blanchard's group. So we've got questions. I'd like to have them answered if we could. Is that possible now, or do I need to wait?
If you have any questions, you can ask them now.
Okay. Give me just a second. All right, the entrance into the neighborhood that's proposed to be built, that entrance will be right there across from Blue Springs Trace, is that correct? That's the only entrance, is that correct? Next question. The trees that are cut down, I heard buffers. What does that mean as far as the trees being cut down? There's, you know, we have Patriots Park on one end of it, there's lights and noise, and it's a real nice buffer now with the woods. I can tell you, I like that. But I'm not, I'm not, excuse me, I'm not saying I'm against this. But what are the buffers going to be with trees? Are we going to go in and just strip all the trees out?
So the fifty-foot buffers that are required on the south side, which would be adjacent to Patriots Park and on the William View side, have to be undisturbed. So you'll have fifty feet width there that they cannot clear the trees.
Okay, what about on the Laurel Drive side? That'll all be stripped?
I believe the applicant's intent was to leave as much of the landscaping on Laurel Drive as they could. But I would imagine a lot of the interior of the site will be cleared.
And what about the Sunbury side?
I don't, we don't require a buffer on that side since it's internal to the development, so they could clear up to that property line if they needed to for the grading to work.
Okay. Well, I'm very concerned about the trees that we can leave. I mean, everybody's complaining about the green, new deal. Let's leave some trees. Okay, we don't need to go crazy and strip everything.
Their developments in the past, they're really good about leaving trees and doing, and not disturbing anything more than they have to.
Okay, let's work on that. Fifty-five and above neighborhood is what this is supposed to be, is that correct? Hope so, or is it? Because what was there before, when we moved into the neighborhood, it was supposed to be an area for senior adults. And I know we came with this several years ago to try to build in there again like we are now, but it wasn't geared towards fifty-five plus. How do we regulate that?
Let's, let's keep, excuse me, let's keep the questions to here and then
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
All right.
That's fine.
I don't come to your forum every night like
No, sir, that's fine.
So how do we regulate that?
So the county doesn't regulate that. That is up to the developer if they choose to make it actually age-restricted, which would require restrictions in the deed or other means for the property. Now, their narrative, and like you said, it is targeted to active adults, but we don't, we're not going to go in there and check the age of the homeowners or anything like that to try and actually literally restrict the age limit there.
Okay, I understand that. That's why I'm asking the question. You know, everybody's excited about a fifty-five-plus neighborhood. It could end up not being that at all.
Too aware of, know anything about Amberly?
No, I do not.
So Amberly is a, was a fifty-five and over.
Is that right down on Columbia Road?
No, it's down at Riverwood, by Greenborough.
Oh, okay, yes.
So it was a fifty-five and over. I can tell you, I own a unit. And there's some, very few are under fifty-five, but nominally five and plus, you know, that kind of style is going to, that's what you're going to get. Nominally that, but have an occasional forty-year-old.
Well, the thing about it is, that's further down the road. That's several miles down the road. We're close to people that are coming from, and I was military, okay, but we have people that are living off base, that's a prime place to come. A small house, no yard work. I would love it if I was just married and a military guy staying there. I'd love to move in there because you have all the amenities in the neighborhood. You don't have no yard work, any of that.
Ever lived next to somebody like, ow?
I'm just, I'm just bringing it up, okay, because I think it's a concern.
If I understood, and if I understood the architecture, they're like two-bedroom homes, all ADA compliant. So, I mean, the design of the homes is for senior, I mean, for seniors.
Which, which younger people that don't want to have yards, that don't want to have some of the other things, would love it.
Well, to answer your question, there's no way we can guarantee that.
I understand.
That'll sum it up.
Okay, but I mean, if we're putting out as fifty-five plus, which was presented to our neighborhood, it's not.
And that's what he's shooting for and making an effort to get to.
Let's hope so. Okay, and then there's one concern that I have that's really major. Laurel Drive is not a nice, friendly road anymore. I've lived there, let's say, ten, eleven years, and the neighborhood, of course, has grown large. There's several hundred cars coming down there through the day, including people going to golf courses, cut-throughs, construction people, and it's a speedway. And with that, with another hundred cars coming out right there, and then trying to get out on William View right now is dangerous in the morning and dangerous a lot of times during the day because it's a blind corner, comes from both ways. It's blind if you ever try to get out there. Because when they proposed on the corner the daycare center, they made a cut-through in our media there because they didn't want to go out onto Columbia Road because of that. Are there any concerns about that? Are we ever going to try to maybe look at that infrastructure and see if we can do anything about that?
Yes, sir, along with, with a lot more of them. We got, I said, yes, sir, along with a lot more of them, very similarly. And it's up to the county and the state to determine which one they're wearing line.
Well, it would be nice, you know, before we go crazy building another subdivision, that we try to address some of that. But I, it's going to be like we are up on one ninety. We're going to build everything, and then we're going to do the infrastructure, I'm afraid. So it's something that I'm concerned with, I'm sure a lot of people are concerned with, especially living on Laurel Drive. It's dangerous right now. I'm very surprised we hadn't got people hurt because a lot of people walk up to that main place to get on the Greenway, and it's dangerous. It really is. And when you throw another hundred cars?
Well, I assure you, it's on the list. That's all I can say about that.
I understand.
But it was being realistic.
Okay, all right. All the questions I can ask, I might be the only one to have them, but
Well, if we could, maybe somebody else wants to come forward.
The only, the only thing I wish, and I'll have to talk to the homeowners people about this, I wish we could have got these questions out and talked about it more before it was presented. Never should be where a board's talking to the builder like that and not include the neighborhood. I just, we did it before, and we didn't do it this time, and it was hard for me to understand.
All right, so thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak on this issue? Come forward to the microphone, please.
My name is Carla Delaney. I live at thirty-eight oh three Blue Springs Trace. I am about two lots from the proposed intersection. My concern, I, I am not against the development at all. I would like to see some consideration given to the fact that Laurel Drive and Blue Springs Trace have experienced a considerable amount of traffic. The speed and the volume are a concern. In the absence of a crosswalk, because it's been taken away, the proposed one, and no sidewalk from Sunbury Loop up to the proposed entrance, I am concerned about sidewalk to nowhere from Sunbury Loop up Laurel Drive, and then the, just the access. I mean, we have sidewalks on both sides of the street throughout the neighborhood, and so that would disappear. I echo the sentiments of the previous speaker because we, as a community, did not get to meet with the developer, members of the board. So there was missing information in that. So I'm not against it, but I would like some consideration to be given for requiring that sidewalk be extended along Laurel Drive down to Sunbury because we do have a problem with speed. And now people are going to, we're adding homes, and people are going to try to cross with no crosswalk except for up there. And we already have a sidewalk that stops on Laurel Drive on the right side. So we already have issues with people trying to traverse as a pedestrian or on a bike, and they're riding in the street or in the grass, and now we're going to add to that. So I would ask for more consideration from the developer and from the Planning Commission to require that sidewalk extension.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else would like to address this issue? All right, sir.
My name's Donald Taylor. I live on fifty-six sixty-nine Sunbury, so I live in Bartram Trail as well. My concern is, we already had the daycare. They came in, clear-cut the land, project stopped. It's three, four years now. We're concerned that this same thing could happen, right? The market could change. They come in and clear-cut the land, market changed. We're concerned that this same thing could happen, right, the market could change, they come in and clear-cut the land, market change, and it's there with no trees on it, and which will impact our, the values of our homes in that area. So I would hope there'd be some consideration about what we can do to make sure that this project goes through, or at least, you know, some kind of bond or something that aside, so that if if it doesn't, that the trees could be replanted and that area could be recovered. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I. Like saying in their motion for or against this issue?
When I make a motion to approve. File RZ twenty-three dash zero one, dash zero one, major flood relief vision. Tax map zero six zero, parcel sixteen nine, also Laurel Drive to revise, allowed uses in development plan.
Do we have a second?
Second, that.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is, Mr. Butler.
Senator, it's a request for rezoning from M, or from C two to M one on four seventy-five Lewiston Road. The current property is split-zoned, M one and C two, this is for a zero point seven three acre portion of the property. The applicant did today request to withdraw without prejudice. So again, we will go through the, what they requested, but again, they have asked to have this be withdrawn. Shows the location of the property on the west side of Lewiston Road and also the south side of William Few Parkway. And the current zoning of the property, again, you can see the split zoning with the M one here and the C two here, we are dealing with this front portion here along Lewiston Road. Here's an aerial view of the property. And the existing site, so behind this, if we go back to there, the property immediately behind it was rezoned last year in March for some self-storage, some climate-controlled self-storage, as was being constructed in this photo at the back there. It was a plot of the property. And the rezoning area, again, the zero point seven three acres, and this shows you the currently under construction, climate-controlled self-storage. And again, the concept plan was for more self, indoor self-storage on the property. As far as future development, staff initially had recommended disapproval of the request, again, they haven't requested to withdraw without prejudice. Part of that is when when this piece here was rezoned last year, it was noted that with the C two on the front and then having the climate-controlled stores there and then traditional stores in the back, it produces a nice transition, you know, from Lewiston Road, which is primarily commercial in this area, into a industrial use that appears to be more commercial than 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 not into a traditional industrial use. So with the request to change this to M one, we felt that was not in keeping with the future land use map or kind of how the area has developed, so we did recommend disapproval at that point. So, again, staff recommends, recommends to accept their request to withdraw without prejudice.
Usually on these circumstances, if someone's here that would like to speak on this issue, now's your time, I'd welcome you to come to the microphone. It is withdrawn without prejudice, but. Okay? In that case, like to have a motion to draw without prejudice or not?
Make a motion. Except the request to withdraw without prejudice.
There's a second.
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Okay, the next item on the agenda is another one that's requesting be withdrawn, is, Mr. Butler.
Again, it's the same property they had variances with, in order to to make the project work, reduce building setbacks and buffers. Again, we've, we've already seen it, they've already requested to withdraw without prejudice, shows the location of the property. Current zoning of the property, again, C two and M one, aerial view of the property. Existing site kind of showing you the other side where it was, where you'd have the reduction in the buffers and the setbacks primarily against the Waffle Houses over there on the south side, plot of the property. The rezoning area, and then also with the concept, it does show you where the MBL, the minimum building line would be versus where they requested it to be down here, again, you do have a larger buffer if it's a rezoned M one against the C two. And again, we were, we were also going to disprove that the request, or recommend this for their, their, their requests as well, again, at this point, we're recommending to accept the request to withdraw without prejudice.
I assume there's nobody here that'd like to speak against that, so do we have a motion to withdraw without prejudice or not?
Chairman, I make a motion to accept the request to withdraw without prejudice.
There's a second.
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Okay. Next item is, Mr. Douglas.
Uh, yes, sir, this is an application for rezoning for a property just off Lewisville Road, it's a twenty-nine, roughly a twenty-nine acre property requesting a rezoning from residential agricultural zoning to R one zoning. This shows the location of the property on the west side of Lewisville Road, south of Anderson Farms subdivision and north of I twenty. This is the current zoning, it's currently zoned residential agriculture, as we said before, as is most, all of the surrounding property. The R one subdivision near the top of the screen here is, again, the Anderson Farms development. Uh, this is the concept plan, it shows a twenty-one lot plan, including a twenty-second parcel for drainage and open space. It shows the proposed development of a road to run down this development, as well as an access off the cul-de-sac at the end of that road to the larger parcel all the way at the back of the development. Uh, this is the existing site, I would draw attention here to the property lines that are largely unplanted and mostly transparent, you can see right through them. Per code, the front lot line here is going to have a fifty-foot planted natural buffer, and the lot lines are budding up to the existing RA property lines that neighbor this property are going to have a twenty-five-foot planted natural buffer. Uh, this is an illustration of our future development map in the county. The subdivision, the development is located within the neighborhood's character area. Compared to the rural neighborhood character area across the street, the neighborhood's character area allows for more dense developments. The average lot per acre size for this development is one point four acres, that's well within the allowable density for the neighborhood character area. However, I'd also draw your attention to Lewisville Road being labeled a rural corridor here, that is identified in our future land development map as a corridor in the community that we are seeking to make a conscious effort to preserve the rural, rural character of that corridor. In that pursuit, staff has included a condition with this application for more densely planted buffering for that fifty-foot natural buffer budding up to Lewisville Road. Or in lieu of more dense planting of that natural buffer, we will, the inclusion of a berm as a part of that buffer to help screen a more densely populated development such as this one from view on Lewisville Road. And staff's recommendation is approval with that condition.
Anyone here who'd like to speak for this issue?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Keith Lawrence, two eleven Dixon Court, Evans, Georgia, three oh eight oh nine. We've been working on this track for a little bit, we've met with staff, we have no problem with the conditions on there. You know, it's a little different for us, we typically have little smaller lots that we do, but I think this is a change of pace for us, I think it's something the county's been after. I know in talking with some of the board of commissioners, they want to see some more larger lots, and so we've moved in that direction on this, this particular track. You know, our plan of attack is side entry garages on the homes, probably there'll be five to seven hundred thousand dollar homes that'll be put in there. We're also looking at some additional landscaping on the track for ourselves, which may include some four-inch caliber trees required of the builders to kind of bring back in, right now it's a hayfield, current use and what it looks like. So we want to do some, we agree, I think, some of the landscaping that was done in the, in the R one down the street needs to be denser than that, get a little more immediate impact on the landscaping. We agree with that on that side, so that'll be taken, taken into account on the landscaping in there. Happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Anybody got any questions?
Thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone here who'd like to speak against this division?
Good evening, my name is Dan Lanning, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, I live eight two five Rolling Brook Lane. We are a gravel road that nearly that into this property on the other side of Lewisville Road. And I am here tonight on behalf of a lot of neighbors to speak to you, I think some of them may speak as well, but just for your information, if anyone is here tonight, that's one of our neighbors, do you mind standing up really quick just so you can see a lot of people that came? Cool, thank you all. I also have something to hand out to every one of you up here.
Here, you can hand it to me, I'll pass them around.
I'll try to be as brief as I can, but as you can see by the support tonight, we have a lot of concern about not only the rezoning from RA to R one, but the proposed development and what's included in there and not included. So I'm not going to read all of this, I'll try to be as brief as I can to be respectful of your time, but I think it's important that we consider it. So we've compiled a petition, which could be somewhere in there, I'm sorry, I didn't grab the petition, one of you might have it, there you go. About forty-seven neighbors have signed that, we had about a week to put something together, we didn't get all the way, but we got a lot of neighbors. For you that have maps, the first picture of a map that you have, sorry, I didn't put a PowerPoint together for everybody to see, is a layout of, the red is where the proposed lot is. Blue are all people who signed this petition that we could get to in a short amount of time. As you'll see, that's more than two hundred acres of land that people own around this, that are in direct opposition, this was not any coercion, this was not hard. People were very willing and and ready to sign, saying we do not want a rezoning from RA to R one. That's our first step, is is please do not rezone, I know there's progress, I know there's development, but but our requests from the people living in this area directly across the street, next to it, down the road, they do not want an R one.
Can I interrupt you there?
Yes.
What do they expect?
Uh, they expect respectful development. Keep it RA. If 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 we're rezoned, or if we keep the RA and do two and a half acre lots, I think a lot of these people would be okay with that, we're talking eight to ten homes on thirty acres. That's respectful for the area, I know what happened with this whole Vision twenty thirty-five update that y'all did in the last two years. We understand that you've continued to change our area from being conservation, rural neighborhoods to now neighborhoods. It's it's a progression from twenty eleven to twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-one, I understand, last couple pages show that progression of our area, none of us are very excited about that progression. We, we would like to keep this as rural as possible, the concessions that you're willing to try to make to make a buffer, that's not the kind of thing we want, we want less homes. We don't want just a berm, we don't want more density of trees, we want less homes, because the character of what Columbia County is in this area is rural. And with the addition of Amazon, Club Car, Greenpoint, what's happening there, and then all the growth from Lewis, Lewiston, we are getting squeezed into nothing. And Anderson Farms went in, got rezoned, which most of these people here were against that as well. You know, that's on the other side of the road, that should have been considered RA still, y'all made a concession for that, and now it's on the other side that you want this to be neighborhoods. You know, at some point, this whole corridor of Lewisville Road is going to continue that trend, what happens with the Bird seven hundred and thirty acres that are behind this? I think I know what happens. It becomes our one, our two, PUD, whatever, it's high density.
You know, it's, it's up to this board and to the county commission to take a piece of property, whether it be this hayfield, or, and I live right up the road and I live very close to there.
Yes, sir, I know where you live.
And make, and make it the highest and best use of the property.
Yes, but that has to be considered with not just a monetary investment for Columbia County.
I don't mean it from a monetary point of view, I mean, the highest and best use of that piece of property, or any piece of property.
That's correct, but.
That's got to be considered.
It is, and 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 if we can stick to an RA zoning of this and build a neighborhood within that, a development of some kind, I think you would have less opposition from the people that actually live here. Most of us still don't want neighborhoods, I'm one of those, but I would be willing to say, if you stick within your RA guideline, if you're willing to develop a road, because you can then change the frontage of what you have to work on the road instead of Lewisville Road, where you'd only get two lots on this, because it's three hundred and fifty feet of frontage on Lewisville Road. You know, it goes from two to ten to twenty-one, y'all, you can read it here. Seventeen of the twenty-one lots are less than one acre. If you average, if you take out the outliers, the out, the smallest and largest, you take those out, because one of them's five acres, which is twenty percent of the whole piece of land. If you take that out and do nineteen of these lots, it's point nine eight five acre lots. Did you know Anderson Farms has one lot that's under one acre? It's point nine nine. Every single one of these homes would be averaged or be smaller than the smallest one in Anderson Farms. That's not the right kind of development for this road. And additionally, Lewisville Road is your corridor to connect all these things together, we've heard all the things for, one of my neighbors said, twelve years for having an exit there. Anderson Farms went in, nothing's changed, Columbia Road intersection, Wrightsboro Road intersection, nothing, you know the traffic, you know the traffic out there. It's getting bad, Lewis Road's getting no help, and now we're going to put forty or fifty more cars on this road that live here? We can't do that. Now, if you're going to do something about the road, maybe we can talk a little more, but.
Problem about that is we're dealing with apple and orange because of Columbia Road being a state road, and we've been after them for, Mr. Studen can tell you longer than I can about putting a light at that intersection because it's so dangerous.
Yes, sir, a lot of people have accidents or death, you know?
And they don't, you know, they make that decision, we don't, and I'm not passing a buck down the road.
No, I, I understand there's a lot more complicated things that go on, but you know, we have.
Go out that intersection sometime, just like you are.
Yes, I mean, if we go down Lewisville to Wrightsboro at the wrong time of night, you're going to sit fifteen cars deep and just wait. And so here we have intersection problems, we have two interstate intersections that are currently under construction, that are just a mess for this area, and now we're going to add more? We're already doing this huge Greenpoint thing that's going to bring a huge amount of people that way, and then, you know, everything along Abbling Harlem Highway, the the density is really squeezing us out. So I understand that people want to develop, we we're not going to stop development in Columbia County, it's a good thing overall, but if we're developing lots that are less than an acre. Off a major corridor road like that, that's a rural area that you want to maintain the character, it's a conflict of what's going on.
On a monthly basis, size of lots, acre lot in Columbia County is.
Yes.
Far.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know what you know about the Bird family, Bird family, they live in area.
They live behind Evans High School?
Right.
Yes, sir, I know.
One, one time we're out, nothing, and then everything builds around it, and I kind of am in that situation too.
That's right.
But me, things as possible as you can get. I don't, I I, I understand, I, I, I know people, I, you know, have that right, but.
That's right.
If it were my property or your property and you were wanting to develop it, I think it was pretty reasonable to to develop this, this and this way.
As, as I stated earlier, I have no problem with development, I I have a problem with the rezoning of it. We, these neighbors here, I built in twenty sixteen, we bought ten acres of land, split it in two with my in-laws, we each have five acres. We have all stuck to the RA plan, we have not tried to get R one, we have not tried to develop more things. If you ask these neighbors back here, which may, some of them may talk, we we like to keep it that way, because it's a community of people that that is is great, and it it's not over density. So I understand certain parts of town are going to be more that direction, but you guys have the opportunity to protect areas, and what we're saying is, please protect our area. I know your update of the Vision twenty thirty-five changed our area to neighborhood, and I know there's seven hundred and sixty acres that the Bird family owns that I'm sure they would love to develop here pretty soon. And I know we probably can't stop all of the R one or PUD or R two or whatever it's going to get over there, but can we protect this piece? This is one of the few Lewisville Road pieces left here, let's protect that as an RA investments.
Let me give you an alternative that may very likely happen in the next, nobody knows. Nobody knows the exact timeframe, but next eighteen months to two years, somewhere along there. County's going to be running sewer from, and this is speculating a little bit now, from the fairgrounds, cross country up the power line.
Okay, yes.
And back across over to Amazon, over in that area. We don't know exactly where it's going to come out at. But if and when it does, and it comes close through there, then they could take this same piece of property, and then they'd be developing it with sewage, and you really have some density.
Yeah.
So that's a potential possibility.
That's true. And I...
And that's why I don't like Amazon. I don't think it's as good for the county as it is bad.
Right.
Because we're having to do things like that. Now, a lot of people disagree with me about that. But I'm just telling you, it's not as far away as we think that sewage is going to come out through that area at some point.
Yes, sir.
Something to think about.
Yeah. Do you, as a question, is there any infrastructure update on this corridor? Like, can we do infrastructure before building more things instead of just building and then doing infrastructure afterwards? Is there any proposal or projection of something happening at some of these intersections?
Mr. Sterling's on the committee about all that. He knows a lot more than we do about it.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Well, I don't know about no more, but I'll give it my best. As far as Lewisville Road, I'm not aware that the county has any active plans in place to widen it or, you know, to make any particular intersection improvements. You know, it was mentioned about Columbia Road. It's been identified. You know, we are in contact with GDOT on a monthly basis, if not daily basis, with our traffic engineering group. But certainly on a monthly basis, we have a meeting to talk about, you know, hotspot areas, areas that need to, some looking at whether that's a physical improvement or just some modifications that may be easy fixes, temporary to a longer range, solve, whatever that may be. I'm not aware of anything that has been decided in terms of the Lewisville-Columbia intersection, and quite frankly, at the other end at Wrightsboro. I know those are both on, kind of on the list, but I don't think there's anything that has targeted money towards that. And in terms of, again, like I said, Lewisville and Columbia County participation, I'm not aware of any pending projects. I will say that, you know, it is something that they are, you know, the county is aware of, and we're looking to, you know, address it where we can. I would remind, you know, certainly the planning commission and, you know, folks of the audience, that there is an active study underway for the interstate interchange at Lewisville. So, you know, we're still waiting to hear what the outcome of that is. Obviously, that will go a long ways towards impacting the future of this area, regardless of, you know, whatever action has occurred with this particular property. So just kind of point that out there as well, so everybody's aware.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
We appreciate you coming. Appreciate your concerns, and I certainly understand where you're coming from.
Do you mind if I say two more things? Is that okay? Thank you. On your, on the ones with maps, sorry, I didn't print seven of them. But there are a couple things that you can look at to say, in Oakwood Point, this is what, 26 acres, because it's 26 developable acres because of the road and everything else that they have to do. It came out to eight homes in that area. And if you go to Wood Creek, which is smaller density, 1.2 acre lots off Columbia Road, you know, we're talking like, I think it was sixteen or seventeen, just taking a poll of that. And then you go to Anderson Farms. That one was rezoned R1. And we still, I think it's either sixteen or seventeen in there that were lots. Those are like 1.4, 1.7 acres, kind of the average. We're blowing that barrier with this design. So I know we're not on the design yet necessarily, or we're combining those two proposals here on this. But, you know, I don't know if you can recommend that there be less lots. You know, we may be fighting a losing battle from RA to R1. I get that. But if you're not going to consider that, please at least consider saying, hey, we can't have twenty-one on here of septic in that small of a piece of land. Twenty-one septics on this, what happens to our water table around here, you know? That's a lot. On the back part of this land, there's a creek. There's a downstream creek. You know, what are we going to do with that watershed and things that happen there? My hope for you tonight is that you'll just postpone this whole thing for another month and take time to think about it before making a decision how you would recommend one way or the other. And, you know, we have a strong community here that live out here, as you can see by people that showed up to support stopping this from rezoning. So it's our request that you will do that. We hope that this can be more about money, or less about money, excuse me, not more about money, man. Less about money and more about protecting what makes Columbia County great. More homes doesn't necessarily make Columbia County that much better. It might make us richer, it might make the county richer, it might make developers richer, it might make a landowner who can sell a lot of acres richer, but does it make your citizens better? What benefit does it bring then? For us out here, it doesn't bring us any benefit to have an extra 25 neighbors that are probably going to be more of a transient neighborhood that potentially bring our neighborhood value down because they're smaller lots.
Well, if he's building half million dollar houses enough, I wouldn't...
I don't believe that's going to be a half million dollar house on less than an acre.
I've known him a long time. He wouldn't stand there and say if I wanted to...
Can I tell you something?
Yes, sir.
I don't believe that one bit.
Well, you got your opinion, and I've got mine.
That's right. But he's built, every property I can find has been less than half an acre lots.
He might not have stood here and told us an acre either on those lots.
Oh, I know, but I don't think you could squeeze much more because these lots are just barely over 30,000 square feet, and that's the minimum of an R1. In his bio on his Whispering Pines website, it says he agrees with the theory of not forcing as many home sites on a land as possible to increase revenue. But you're squeezing twenty-one on here. You can't squeeze that many more unless you broke that five acre up in the back, and that's probably to build into Bird Farms later.
Made your point. I appreciate you coming.
Thank you for your time. I do appreciate it.
Mr. Lawrence, about what size lots do you think you'd average in that subdivision? Any other questions from anybody? Anybody else like to talk about it? We have a motion to...
Turn with the, oh, sorry. My name is Rob Seicherbach. I live out on Rock Hill Lane, roughly right across the street from this. I came to y'all a couple of years ago when we were talking about Anderson Farms. If I remember right, the original proposal showed those to be smaller initial lots too. That went through a couple revisions. Some of that was with y'all's help. That ended up kind of landing at a little bit, about acre and a half on average, few bigger, one or two smaller. That's kind of similar to why I'm here tonight. It's sort of asking to maintain that same aesthetic. A berm doesn't maintain a rural corridor. Less density of housing does. I think Dan spoke to that, so I'm not going to tie you up here tonight with that. But if we could get down around sixteen homes, similar lot size to what's in Anderson Farms, I'd like to see the development go through. There's nice homes, stable community. Where we're at that tipping point, I think, is the density here. And again, I think that's what got a lot of our attention when this got brought to us, was not that there was development going out there. None of us are surprised by that. Just the density is really out of character for the region. And so again, I would just ask y'all to consider maybe working with you guys on the development side. I'm sure many of the community members would like to meet with you too to see if there's a way we can just scale that down a little bit so that it actually is more consistent with everything else that's out there already. That's all. Thank you all.
Excuse me one second. Could you spell your last name?
I almost never get that. S U Y K E R B U Y K.
What was your address again?
2050 Rock Hill Lane.
All right, thank you.
That's Mr. Jim Cloud's buddy.
Oh, yes, sir.
ND after that.
We stays busy.
Gentlemen, committee members, I'm Bob Anderson. I live in, on the property right adjacent to the proposed rezoned area. I grew up in Columbia County, and I spent most of my early life in this area. I love Columbia County, and I knew when I retired, I would come back to Columbia County. Two thousand and eight, beautiful wife Linda, and I started building a home on our property on Lewisville Road. We looked at the zoning. We looked at adjacent properties. We took, all right, we took two and a half acres for a requirement. We took the required road frontage and cut it out of our property so that we would have the requirement for RA. I looked at the properties next door. I said, what could be built there given the zoning that was there? And guess what? There's a couple of houses given the RA zoning. I said, okay, we're not going to be crowded. We're not going to be crowded. We'll be just fine. Well, I followed the Vision 2035 planning session. I attended 2011, 2016, 2021. Every session, I provided my input. And the last meeting I went to, which still showed this rural area on Lewisville Road, a rural corridor going through, I circled it. I got someone from the planning commission to say, please show me this area, so I'm sure I'm circling the right thing. I said, keep this residential. We were excited to be back in Columbia County. A lot of changes, I know. A lot of more people, a lot more traffic. But I was proud to be back in the country where I grew up. Imagine my surprise when I woke up one morning, Linda and I did, and saw that that was going to be a subdivision of twenty-one houses next door. That's not RA. That's not maintaining a rural corridor. If you look at the areas around there, you look at Lynette Lane, you look at Rock Hill Lane, you look at Anderson Road, you look at Gavin Road, all of those are a minimum of two acres. And it's two of my neighbors have already pointed out, and multitude of my neighbors here, we would like to see less density in what's being developed there. Now, RA would technically say two homes, given the road frontage and given the two and a half acre limitations. I'm appreciative of the fact that there's going to be additional infrastructure around the fencing and around the area. I measured how far the backyard of two of these lots are going to be from my house. They will be, that property line is going to be 50 foot from my house. Now, you might say, well, that's a big area. Well, that's a big area maybe if you're in a subdivision, and that's what we're going to have next to us. So I would respectfully request that you consider leaving this RA and that the builder work with us in terms of trying to figure out a plan which would be more acceptable to a rural corridor area and to, I would say, 90% of the people that live between Columbia Road and Wrightsboro Road. Gentlemen, I thank you for your consideration, and I'll stop here.
Thank you, sir. Okay. I'd like a motion to accept or deny this Lewisville Road project. I speak up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I make a motion. The condition, file RZ 230103.
Do we have a second? All them favors signify by raising your right hands. Is concept plan for Bird Farm Estates. Mr. Sterling, is that the same?
Same thing is the concept that goes with the...
So this is the concept plan for Bird Farm Estates located off Lewisville Road. The current zoning is RA. The concept plan is presented based on the requested zoning of R1 that we just heard. It is twenty-one lots on 29.4 acres. This is the location of the property on the west side of Lewisville Road, and you can see on the aerial, a large majority of the property is already cleared. There is an existing tree line at the back of the property. The existing conditions show that the high point of the property is at the east side of Lewisville Road. The property slopes from there down to the creek at the west end of the property. There is an associated flood plain with that creek, and the flood plain manager has indicated that there are additional state waters and possibly wetlands in this area that are not currently reflected on the existing conditions map. These features will need to be identified and delineated prior to submission of the construction plans and may impact the layout and the permitting needed for the project. This shows the existing site again mostly cleared at this time. And the proposed concept plan is development of a single public road running east-west roughly down the middle of the property and terminating just before the flood plain at the west end of the property. The road would serve twenty of the proposed lots, with the twenty-first lot served by a driveway off of the cul-de-sac that would cross the creek there. That easement serves just the one lot and is in compliance with Chapter 74 regarding lots served by easements. The lots are intended to be served by public water, but would be served by septic systems. The minimum lot size for R1 with septic is 40,000 square feet, and the lots do all meet this requirement. The proposed road is approximately 1,800 feet long. County code does limit the length of cul-de-sacs to 700 feet unless otherwise approved by planning commission. In this case, the site is long and narrow, and there are no existing roads to provide any type of interconnectivity on the property. The features of the site kind of restrict the development pattern to this long cul-de-sac, and with a relatively small number of lots served by the single road, there's no particular concerns with this request. The soil survey has been completed and been reviewed by the health department, which has indicated that the soils are suitable for the proposed septic systems. The lots are not intended to be mass graded. Only the road and the associated utilities will be graded. Therefore, the perimeter of the site requires only a 25-foot buffer, with the exception of the public road frontage on Lewisville Road, which will require the 50-foot buffer, and there is the proposed condition with the rezoning regarding additional planting in that buffer. The applicant is proposing to supplement the required buffer on the north and south property lines with a six-foot privacy fence. This will provide more immediate screening while the required landscaping grows, but this does not negate the requirement for the 25-foot planted buffer. And staff is recommending approval of the concept plan.
Anyone like to discuss this issue? Do they have a motion on the floor to accept or deny? Yes, sir. Come forward.
No one else is going to say something? I'm going to say something one more time, at least for the record. Dan Lanning, 825, rolling Brook Lane. I would please ask, petition, beg, whatever I have to do, please do not approve this at this rate. You at least made Anderson Farms do a few revisions.
We've already voted that.
No, you did R8, R1, right?
Yes, sir.
This is for the design, correct?
Correct.
Twenty-one homes? Yeah. Please do not approve this right away. He spoke to no one in our neighborhood, not a single person. Did Keith Lawrence come over? Mr. Byrd, nobody came and talked to us, asked anything. These lots are minimum lot requirements.
You will have time between now and when this goes to the county commission to discuss it with whoever you please.
Okay.
And then at that time, they'll vote it, and their vote overrules us.
Is this the one in two weeks?
That's the best I've got for you for that.
Okay. Well, as long as we have an opportunity to hear this again somewhere else, that's what I want to know.
The county commission will hear it at their next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, come on. Yes, ma'am, go on. Okay, you just take a breath.
My name is Candace Lanning, and I'm at the same address as him, 825 Rolling Brook Lane. I just, I guess what I wanted to get across is we've come here to talk about it because it's our first time hearing about it, and we really appreciate y'all listening. My main concern is, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but my main concern is it feels like we've come in and all of this has been decided. It doesn't matter what we say.
Oh, man, that's not true.
And I would like to feel like that you guys are willing to postpone so we can feel like we've been heard, so you can look through the work that we put into.
Could I interrupt you just a second?
Yeah, absolutely.
It's just like what I told your husband. You have another opportunity when it goes before the County Commission. And that's the reason we don't normally postpone things like this because you've come here tonight and we appreciate you coming and discussing it with us. But now, all this will go to the County Commission, which is the deciding vote.
Gotcha. I had just hoped that as our neighbors, you guys, some of you are close neighbors, that you guys would have put in kind of what we're feeling, being part of it.
I understand exactly what you're saying.
So, but I just had to say that. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, now, we've got to have a motion.
Could we ask the developer to explain the perimeter and the additional landscaping and greenery around the property?
Five foot, that'll be. It's not natural because there's nothing there. We've added the structural buffer, which is not a requirement, fencing on the north and south side. And then along the road frontage, we're going to do a heavy landscape that will landscape and make it less visible than it currently is. That side. Vegetation? We have to plant trees according to county standards that will be planted along the back. Plus, we'll be planting additional trees on the property. They teach one each. That's where they're going to be a fence. 25 foot, that has. Don't, we have not gotten that far. We usually meet with Jonathan, who's an architect for Columbia County on those types. It won't be Leel and Cypress because those don't really do well. Top-heavy and. Likely it'll be a berm that'll be heavy. Very specific. And to do more, asking for. We're very cognizant of how it impacts. But first thing on the regional. Automatically even though. Also, we need to stand cabbage. Color is very similar to the trunk of a pine tree. Natural color, as opposed to bright colors can be. Actually, everything that we found out at Whispering Pines and requires cabbage Spanish. A brown. Close to a pine. You can ask the Planning Department. I've called. Find out any questions that have. Our information's on all of it.
Thank you. Okay, this will be the last one now, please.
David Whitley, I'm at 8:20, I mean, 8:30, Rolling Brook Lane. Right straight across from there in that open field. The one thing that here about 13 years ago, there was a, something that was brought up before the board, and at that time, we had heard that it was approved. They was going to put an exit at Lewisville Road in I-20 to bring it down through there. And with all these, all these homes being built, it sort of got pushed off to other locations. I was wondering, has that been revisited lately? And then the other thing that I would raise a question to was, y'all carry a heavy weight with your approval. You approve this and it goes to the board. That's a heavy weight put on the board to go ahead and accept it. We don't want that weight to be so heavy till they won't throw it off. If they'll take a look at it, that's a, that was just.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate it.
Mr. Sterling can ask you a question about the Lewisville Road I-20.
The interchange, yeah. The, there was an application made to the Federal Highway Administration for their review and Department of Defense. And, you know, so there, like I said earlier, they are reviewing that currently. I'm not aware that there is a specific deadline or timeline in which we are expecting a response. However, I know that Fort Gordon is certainly a part of that application and is very interested in that outcome. So it has been, you know, applied for. We're waiting to hear back on kind of what that outcome is. Whether that's, yes, you can do it, or now you gotta go find the money, or no, you, you know, we don't think it's appropriate at this time. We're still waiting to hear.
I knew at that, at that time, the lights of the South and the gentleman that was there, he had applied for application for other things.
Sure.
Put in there, and that was one of the things that he had been told originally that was coming in there, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, do we have a motion to accept or deny item five?
Make a motion to approve the concept plan for Bird Farm.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Okay, the next item on the agenda is, Mr. Butler.
Lieutenant Sheriff's request for a plan revision on Columbia Road. Currently zoned, planning unit development, major vision to revise the plan for a more mixed-use planning unit development. Again, the applicant has requested to postpone this one as well. So again, we've seen a few of these this evening. This location of the property on the south side of Columbia Road, right across from Bartram Trail and next to Ivy Creek, or Ivy Falls, excuse me. Good zone of the property and currently zoned planning unit development, as is a lot of things out there. Again, with the revision, it does, it does have a currently adopted plan for commercial development on the site. So we are essentially revising that plan itself. Shows aerial view of the property. And also site views of the property from two different locations on Columbia and within Long Creek Falls, I believe. And the plot of the property. And the approved plan. And shows, again, this is what could currently be built there. And this shows the current development plan. Again, there is a request to postpone this. We have some concern with a few items with it, with the stormwater, some of the shared easements, some of the access potentially. Again, the plan itself, as I saw before, this is definitely more modern, does have some townhomes slash apartments. We would call them apartments. They call them townhomes within the, within the development. But again, does look more like a typical modern development with what we've seen in Columbia County. Those are the runways of the proposed buildings on the site. Well, again, for multiple sites or multiple lots on the site itself. Go through those quickly. And again, future land use, from a future land use standpoint, it is within neighborhoods. However, it is existing planning and development. It does have existing plant attached to it. We see this happen fairly often because, again, the residential will usually get developed first, and then the commercial comes later. So you can have plods that essentially sit dormant for years, and then all of a sudden, there's a commercial development out front. Again, the revision to the plan itself, we are working with the applicant on adjusting some of those things. Overall, it is definitely an improvement from what was there before. But again, staff does recommend postponing the request February 2nd, 2023. That includes staff recommendation.
Is anyone that'd like to speak on behalf of this issue present?
Aaron Boeslaughter, James G. Swift and Associates, 420 Gemstone Court. Just want to say that we're working with the county, and we've got a few issues that we're going to clear up, and there's a little bit of information we got to get on the regional pond and conservation easements. Everybody happy with what's existing. Have any questions? I'll be more questions, will you?
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Lauder. Yes, sir.
Name's Robert McCorkle. I live at 1964 Long Creek Falls. Original homeowner. They're from the original development. I would like to say that's, I've loved to see the progress there. My, my issues are small compared to what I just heard from these fellows. My concern is, is turning this into all the traffic there. We only have one original entrance to Ivy Falls. Thank goodness we have the backside open now. The Patriots Ridge built on the top of there. They were allowed not to build the other entrance into their neighborhood. So we have that high traffic load that's there already. Now, I understand about developing a subdivision there. That'll be homeowners going. But when you turn it into a commercial area, whatever it be, grocery store or gym, we have a nut, the Ivy, Long Creek Falls is a cut through now. People coming off from Baker Place. We have people cutting through there, believe it or not, from Riverwood. To stay away from Exit 1. I just want you to consider that for the homeowners that have lived there since day one, and we've seen it turn from a cattle farm, what you see today. I know it has to be developed. I'm glad to see the progress. Take that into consideration about that other entrance that was supposed to be there that was on the original development, but that third entrance on Columbia Road that was allowed not to be built when Patriots Ridge was put in.
Thank you. We have a motion to accept or deny this postponement to February 2nd.
Motion to postpone, file RZ 23-01-04. I didn't commission.
2nd, February 2nd. Six, that's all right. We got you.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Okay, the next item is Mr. Butler.
Lieutenant Sheriff's request for rezoning over at 4389 Herford Farm Road from R2 to C1, office in commercial use. This location of property on the north side of Herford Farm Road, right across from Marie Street there. Again, it shows current zoning of R2. You have C1 to the north and C2, and then you have some C1 around it, and it's R2, excuse me, to the west of the property. One thing too, just to let you know, this has been requested to postpone as well, as is going to be a theme tonight. This aerial view of the property. And the existing site itself. And the plot of the property. And the concept plan. So one of the things with Herford Farm is it is currently going through a widening project. At the very, very beginning of it, there is acquisition of property. You can see this line here shows some of that acquisition. It would get rid of that house you saw in that picture before. What they're proposing is they're going to put a office up here on Lampkin Drive, already zoned, C1. Their request was to rezone this to C1, combine them together, put a tension pond on this property, reuse this existing building and have it all be combined. No access will be for Herford Farm. Fairly simple request for being honest from a, from how you'd view that from a land use standpoint. However, during that, there was some work that was done a little outside of, of the permit that was requested and approved there. So we have been working with the applicant to address those, those concerns. So we have worked out to postpone this to address those issues and come to some sort of agreement with that. We have not yet worked out what that's going to be. Again, again, with quite a bit of work on the property at this one, both properties, excuse me, on this. Again, more pictures of the garage and also what's been done on the properties themselves. First, future development, like I said, this is within the Evans Town Center Mixed Use Activity Center. Again, this would be for, as we're currently within that, that activity center on the cop plan. You would have resident, or you'd have commercial uses here. There's C1 adjacent to C1 north of it. These properties would transition to being C1 over time to the west of this. Makes a lot of sense. However, in order to kind of work out some of those issues that I've just brought up, we are recommending postponing this request February 16th. That includes staff recommendation.
Anyone here that'd like to speak on behalf of, of this issue? Anyone want to speak against it? We have a motion to approve or deny the postponement to February 16th.
Make a motion to postpone the request to February.
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Next one. Mr. Butler.
This is a companion variance to this request to reduce building setbacks for S9S 98, list lot structure requirements on the same property at 4389 Herford Farm Road. This location of the property, we just saw it, again, north, north side of Herford Farm, currently zoned R2. There was a request to rezone to C1. Shows the aerial view of the property, also the existing site, and the plot of the property and the concept. So let's hold up right here for a minute. If this were to be rezoned to C1, it would be within the Evans Town Center overlay district. That has some unique characteristics for the building setbacks. You have a max building setback from the center line. In this situation, it'd be 125. You couldn't actually meet that or be very, very close to not being able to meet it with the acquisition of property. So it's one that, and you also have a five-foot minimum setback as well. So you have a setback that's really close together, no matter what you do, where the building had to be within that. They're not intending to have anything on the front of this property on Herford Farm. So it makes sense to waive that requirement for the max setback. Another thing is that this existing building here is about two and a half, three feet off of the property line. Very much within that three-foot building setback. And if it was rezoned to C1, so again, there'd have to be a variance for that as well. And we're working, there's some issues on the site. So again, at this point, staff's recommending to postpone this request February 16th.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone this to February 16th.
Hold on one second. We haven't done the public hearing yet.
We haven't done the public hearing, at least given public opportunity.
There was nobody that questioned it the first time on that same address. It was my purpose in doing that. Now, is anybody want to say anything about it? Okay, do your motion again, please.
Okay. They said we postponed the request for February 16th.
The second.
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Okay. Item number nine, Ms. McHenry.
Yes, sir. This is a request for rezoning at 936 Appling Harlem Road from RA Residential Agricultural to S1 Special for Horizon Towing and additional office uses. This is the location of the property on the west side of Appling Harlem Road, near the intersection with Old Union Road and North Fairview Drive. Again, the property is currently zoned RA, residential agricultural, as are the majority of the surrounding properties. The exceptions being the general commercial property just to the northwest and the existing Horizon Motor Coach and Horizon Towing location just to the northeast, which is already zoned S1 Special. This shows the aerial of the site with several existing buildings. And this shows the, the two main existing buildings near the front of the property. The intent is to reuse this primary building as office space. The intent is to demolish the, the secondary building and rebuild a, a building in the same location of the same size, trying to very much keep kind of the, the historic layout and feel of this property as it changes uses. So the development plan shows retention of the existing buildings here and then the replacement of the building at the north end of the property. It also shows installation of chain link fencing around the site. That is actually mostly complete at this time as well as installation of a buffer around the site, which is not complete and would, would need to be completed prior to operation of any of the businesses here. The site plan does show retention of all three existing driveway cuts. Appling Harlem Road is a state route, so the applicant will have to coordinate with DOT regarding whether they'll be allowed to keep all of those entrances. There is some additional site work that needs to be done to meet parking requirements. The applicant has indicated that they would provide the required paved parking. Based on the size of the building, they would need 17 spaces. The intended use for the site is for Horizon Towing's office and CDL training classroom as well as leasable office space, and then the fenced area at the back of the site would be used for parking of the, the tow trucks and the other vehicles related to Horizon Towing. As well as leasable office space, and then the fenced area at the back of the site would be used for parking of the the tow trucks and the other vehicles related to Horizon Towing. This shows a couple pictures of the existing site showing the the fencing and the uh work in progress leaving gaps for the gate. Uh, these existing buildings are intended to stay, some of these are actually on the residential property. Uh, so if you can see kind of where this property line goes here, uh, there is, these buildings are kind of in the backyard here. Uh, so the the fence line currently actually cuts through that residential property and is not entirely on the parcel that we're looking at to to be rezoned. Uh, we do have conditions speaking to this, uh, that, you know, when they finalize their site plan and their site work, that fence and their buffer need to actually be on the property that's being zoned S one. Rather than cutting through the middle of the the property that's staying residential. Uh, you can see there are is already some equipment on the site, and the applicant has indicated that this equipment would stay there. Um, it is primarily related to Horizon Towing, and we do have a condition proposed clarifying that. Um, this is not to be just a general truck or equipment storage lot. The only storage allowed here would be the vehicles related to the Horizon Towing business. And this shows the existing building that's to be demolished. Uh, the intent is to try and keep this overhang and reuse it as part of the the reconstructed building. Uh, trying to again, kind of keep with the the historical layout and feel of the site. Uh, and the applicant did provide examples of the proposed building to be reconstructed in that same location. In terms of the future land use map, this property is in the rural character area. This is intended to be very low density residential and agricultural uses, uh, very much in keeping with the the rural nature of the area. Uh, we're generally looking at a very scattered development pattern and primarily residential and agricultural structures. Uh, the proposed use is it really industrial in nature, uh, being the towing business, uh, which is not something that's anticipated in this rural character area. However, this property has not actually been in residential or agricultural use for many years, um, since at least nineteen seventy-seven and possibly as far back as the nineteen forties. Uh, this was Neil's Garage and Wrecker Service, uh, so it has been in commercial slash industrial use as a towing business and auto repair shop for for quite a while. Uh, that business has now been closed more than twelve months, so to put this property back into any type of commercial use, it does have to be rezoned. Uh, which is the request before you tonight. Uh, the proposed use for Horizon Towing is similar in nature to the historic use of the property. Although likely actually lower impact since they would not really be doing the vehicle repair aspect there, just the the office uses and the parking of the tow trucks. Uh, the applicant is intending to retain the historic layout of the property. And as part of the intent of the rural character area is to kind of preserve the historic features of that area. Uh, this does kind of help preserve something of a a landmark in this Harlem area and is a a similar use and in keeping with the intent of the character area. Staff is therefore recommending approval with several conditions. Uh, that the sides of the storage area adjacent to nine thirty-four Apling Harlem Road, that would be the the little residential property that's inset in the property. And facing Apling Harlem Road must be screened with a minimum ten foot structural buffer. Uh, fencing has to be located on the property of nine thirty-six Apling Harlem Road. Uh, that is addressing where we saw that fencing cutting across the residential parcel. And relocation and removal of existing storage structures may be needed to accommodate the required fencing and plantings. Uh, the outdoor storage area may only be used to park vehicles used for the Horizon Towing business. Vehicles not owned or operated by this business may not be stored on the property. And this is not intended to restrict parking of passenger vehicles related to other operating businesses. Again, they are intending to to rent some office space out, and certainly there would be um parking for the the users of the of the other offices. And that can be a recommendation.
Is anyone here that would like to speak on this issue?
Chairman, name is Alvin Harris. Harlem Road, Georgia. Uh, operate the Horizon Motor Coach facility there. Currently operate a Horizon Towing also there that facility. Space that we are questioning across the street there would be used for the prepare the to um to park the towing buses and establish an office at that location for towing. Yeah, our goal is to maintain that historical outlook of Harlem and for that facility that's been there for many years. Very proud of Neil's garage that's been there. Definitely not planning to make a a garage or service area or repair any vehicle site. Trying to uh utilize space for Horizon and the vehicles office space for point. Uh, greatly appreciate you all considering the fact that we are planning to all the parents and the uh revision that they are offering, questioning to for moving in that site and forward to answering any question that you may have.
Any questions? Thanks, sir. Anyone here that'd like to speak against this issue? In the case, like a motion to accept or deny?
Chairman, I'll make a motion. Uh, RZ twenty-three dash zero one dash zero six. Horizon Towing.
The second.
Second.
All in favor of seeing if I've been raising your right hand? Thank you. We already done number ten and eleven. Item number twelve.
Lieutenant Sheriff's request for rezoning out off Cobham Road for a quarter acre por- a quarter acre portion of an overall hundred thirty-two acres from RA to S one. For proposed cell tower, AKA wireless telecommunications tower. His location of the property and the zoning of the property, and it's currently zoned RA to the north, you have uh McDuffie County. And aerial view of the property, the existing site. And the plot of the property, a very old one. And the the overall development plan. So one thing with this one, again, as we've seen with several, there's a request to postpone this um this application. I'll kind of go into why with the variance here in a moment. But uh for a, just for a a a cell tower, since we do have two new, two new folks on the uh on the commission. Um, what you typically have with a cell tower is you have a lease area, which is the portion here says proposed hundred by hundred infrastructure lease area. You have an access road that goes to it, and the only reason a portion of the property. Um, and from a zoning standpoint, it's pretty straightforward if there's a good reason for it, if it shows there's improvement with this with the cells cell site and it's not, you know, detrimental to the area. Uh, we'll talk about the height here in a moment, but this one is a little little higher than typical. Uh, but again, this shows you where it would be on the development plan. Future element side of things, this is the rural character area. Uh, cell towers aren't explicitly mentioned within that, but again, it is something that does provide a civic benefit, especially uh nowadays. Um, especially out in the rural side of the of the county, you do want to have, be able to have that rural life, but be able to have fast internet and telephone calls. Um, so it makes some sense. Again, we are looking, or they have requested to postpone this request February sixteenth, and that includes staff recommendation.
Anyone like to address this issue?
My name's Dave Dozier, I'm actually the landowner. And just wanted to point out that while I know the next item that comes up is about the the communication tower height. Um, wireless service out there is awful. I'm the I'm the land, you know, and also point out that all around that area is all my family, we own all that land. Uh, between my brothers and my aunt and other family members down through. And so we've had extensive communication to make sure that we've placed this in a spot that's not interruptive to anybody or in a direct line to be, you know, walk out their front door and it's right there in their face. And there is, you know, tree frontage and stuff there, and, you know, there's no other planned changes for that. And we're, the one of the factors for the increased height, which Mr. Butler will bring up, is that down the road, as technology continues to advance, I mean, the technology sector. Uh, YMAX will be something that we could look at versus having cable and wires and poles and everything that goes along with that. So, um, I appreciate your time, sir.
Thank you, sir. Anyone like to speak against this issue? Like to ask for a motion to accept or to deny this postponement?
Chairman, I'll make a recommendation that we postpone this to February sixteen.
Second. All in favor of seeing if I've been raising your right hand? Okay, now number thirteen, Mr. Butler.
Lieutenant Sheriff, this is a request for variance, a couple of sections we don't really see very often, section eighteen dash three oh five, C one. Application of the requirements, eighteen dash three oh eight, high of telecommunications towers out off Cobham Road on a quarter acre portion of of a piece of property. Uh, looking to not use a monopole tower and also to increase the height of the proposed tower. Again, location of the property, we've we've seen it just recently off Cobham Road, and currently zoned RA as as is everything else around it. It shows the existing site, another another view of the existing site, I'll say, uh, plot of the property. And the overall development plan. And this shows the tower type, so typically a tower, a wireless telecommunications tower is gonna be a monopole. They're basically, they look like a just a straight pole, they're a hundred fifty feet usually or less. Um, they blend in usually pretty well. Uh, the request here is for a self-supported lattice type, you've probably seen these along the interstate, um, perhaps in rural areas. Um, again, when they, uh, excuse me, let me go back, so the height is two hundred sixty feet overall, uh, you can't build a monopole that high. So you're having to ask for a height variance, uh, to go above the one fifty and also to not use a monopole and use a self-supporting tower. So a couple of things there. Um, one of the things with a request like this, we get quite, you can keep me one, we get photo simulations, which are always really cool to see. Uh, because it shows you, here's what this thing's gonna look like from actual locations on the ground. Um, you know, here's how it's gonna impact, you know, the roadways, adjacent property, um, a- all throughout the area. Um, it kind of gives you an idea of of, you know, what is this actually gonna look like? Um, and it's really cool to see from, in my opinion. Uh, they 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 do, they they make these off of a balloon flight, they they put up a balloon for a certain amount of time and they have to advertise that, it's pretty interesting. So in terms of of of, you know, what we're looking at for, uh, we're looking at how it impacts the area, but then also there is also a component of, you know, what does the coverage look like? Uh, this shows the existing AT&T coverage, um, if it's red or orange, it's good, if it's blue, it isn't. Um, and then what we're looking at is one here, so again, they provided one showing existing is not great. And then with that two hundred sixty foot high tower, everything up there is lit up like a Christmas tree. Now, the issue that we currently have, and it's due to holidays and et cetera, et cetera, but um they have not shown us, you know, here's what it looks like at one fifty. One that, you know, is there a a marked difference between the two? Um, we're still waiting on that, still working with the applicant. Um, that's one of the things we're missing. Um, and also, you know, that can also help us make more decisions on the height of it and all of that. So because of that, or the applicant has a request to postpone to February sixteenth, this request, that includes staff recommendation.
Since the two issues were coming together, I'd like a motion to postpone to February sixteenth on this item.
Make a recommendation, postpone to February sixteen.
Second. All in favor of seeing if I've been raising your right hand? Well.
Try the first one.
Not that one down down the road. No matter, does anybody else want to discuss anything, I have a motion to adjourn, what?
We got one.
We got some public comments, sounds like.
Hi, Aisha Manus, A I S H A M A N U S, at fourteen fifty-five Sawmill Trail. I was late today because traffic in Grove Town is an absolute nightmare, and I just wanted to get clarification that RZ two-two dash twelve dash oh three was withdrawn, because that's what the guy said, but I want to like know for a fact. So when I go back, I can tell people it's not an issue right now.
It was withdrawn without prejudice, so that gives them the ability to come back at any point, but we don't anticipate that that'll be back. I'm in the next week or two, it'll be a while while we work out some of those issues.
Okay, so it's still.
It's out there, but it's not.
On the shelf, but not on the table?
Yes, that's fair, but.
Okay.
We'll go with that.
But that's that, okay, so but at least we know it's not like dead, but it's not alive.
Pending.
Okay, cool. I just want, that way I know I can go back to the people and tell them, I just, I can't take the word of the guy sitting next to me who's a developer, so, you know. Thank you very much.
We're from the government, we're here to help.
Anybody else want to have anything to say before we adjourn this meeting? You do, I'm listening.
Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor of seeing if I've been raising your right hand? Thank you for coming.